That's another expense you're gonna have once a year because oil separator, we use uh. Crystal Clean, I probably should advertise one, but that's who we use. They're really good. They're out of Saratoga. They come up once a year. They pull the cover off the oil separator. They clean. I don't wanna go down there and clean what they clean, but I pull the cover off usually for them and get it ready because we charge it for that too. If they gotta pull the cover, but if it's all open, they'll go down and they 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 bring their own back truck in that day and then they actually go in and they steam. Clean the whole fucking inside.
That can't be cheap either then.
Uh huh. It's been awhile since it been cheap, but I think it used to be around fifteen, sixteen hundred bucks.
No, the filters are they, the filters expensive.
It's it's really, it's all baffled. So the oil nicely rises to the top and the water stays underneath. So the the lower pipe. Takes the water out to the outside tank and the oil floats over probably, I'm guessing, a twenty-four inch wall in there.
The valve.
And then that gets caught on the other side and that's what they clean up. So the water's never soaked it really.
Guys, and I want some of those septic tanks with those filters. It's a headache.
Yeah, no, this is all baffled and it's that's where the oil. I'm probably over simple tying it a little bit by looking in and watching what they're doing and seeing where the oil.
And that sorts majority of it out of the where it goes into the septic?
Yeah, and as soon as you turn a wrench. In a garage anywhere, then you're supposed to have an oil water separator, whether you lose oil or any other fluids underground. So um, matter of fact, D C's kinda cramped it down to uh even uh the phosphorus and detergents. If you wash your vehicles inside, then I want you to have the separator. So that it doesn't, the phosphorus doesn't go into the leak or into the stream.
But it'll go to the filtration plant at the end of the center.
And it's supposed to be drinkable when it comes out.
Probably going right into river.
We'd be spending a million dollar.
Big rain.
Million dollar project down there to clean.
Like I said, I agree that that one is the best way to go money wise. Um, right off the bat, you're gonna spend more upfront, but it's gonna cost you less in the long run.
As long as the filters don't plug up and.
Yeah.
You know, they last.
Yeah, if you're asking about that the filters, I I'm sorry, I thought you meant in the tank. Um, and there's no filters in our tank because it goes to outside.
Right.
Holding tank. So roughly we've got about three thousand gallons before the alarm goes off and then that tells you, hey, it's time to get it pumped. And that go, the alarm goes off at two quarters of a tank level between the two out, the outside one and inside. And the oil water separator. But uh, they gives you plenty of time. We've never filled it.
You must get sand and stuff in that too.
Yeah, well, you're, that's where your grate, your grates come in, your floor grates. There's uh sand traps in the floor grates.
To catch some of it.
Yeah, we pull up the grates and and dig the sand out of there. We can usually get away with doing that once a year in the spring. The old ones that used to be the little round catch basins, man, they plugged and then the water wouldn't even go down and through, but I've never seen that with these and they've been operating about six years. That's kinda the the system that I'm looking at for up at the garage. It's kinda tried and true and I've seen it work. You know, it seems like that's the way to go.
And they do have room for that there?
The oil water separator in the tank? Yeah, there's a lot of room in the back um to put the the excellent tank that they had to or to. Put the the leach out there. The leach, I would guess, would have to go on the side maybe just because the elevation starts going that way as you go up the back of the garage and that side yard over there is more level.
Would they have to put in a raised bed?
I don't believe so. I think it all depends on the perk test and what they figure out when they start doing the geological soiery.
More money then with it.
Yeah, oh absolutely. But I don't think we'll have that problem up there. I really don't.
Then it would be cheaper.
According to Mike, everything that goes in the ground up there goes right into the ground up there. It it doesn't stay on top for a while.
They're gonna get a lot more melted stuff in that garage than you do with that fire station.
Yeah, yeah, because.
Their trucks are out a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. They may not wash them as much as we wash them.
Yeah, you have to work on that.
But the hose, like I said, you take a couple hoses, you might use, you know, twenty gallons of water, twenty-five. Take a truck and hose it down. But yeah, that would be my recommendation too. So he's gonna work it out both ways. Uh, give us pricing on it.
What do they recommend?
Well, they don't care because it's up to you. Uh, what way you go. Uh, just like over there, they didn't care. Uh, they'll put it in either way and engineer it either way. Both are acceptable. Um, it's really what you wanna put up front and whether you want maintenance. Again, you're still gonna have maintenance or back flushing the filters, but uh, the filters, like I said, I think it's a three filtration system before it goes out into the the least bed if we get that one. And uh, there's sand. There's, they're just sand filters like a pool. So maybe other than back flushing them, maybe every couple.
So it's me just changing the sand in them then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was thinking of another filter like in a septic system.
Oh, no, no, just sand filters.
They must be pretty good size.
Yeah. Yeah, South Plasberg. I bet you they were as high as that desk over there and maybe about that big a rail, you know, and it's treatable. And then you turn the valves on them.
Just like the pool.
Yeah, exactly. And you back flush them and you have to show that you did that. But um, that's part of the 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 process of who puts them in. They would go through that and show you, you know, the particular system.
When you back flush them, you have to pump that too.
That that back flush, I think is just to make sure that the the sand filters don't plug up with particulates. There should never be any oil getting that far to go. But like I say, the oil is is kept in that oil separator, which you, like I say, clean and.
Right.
And pump out once a year. Like I said, Crystal Clean, I think that's ours. But that's just to make sure the filters are just bypassing the filter and water going out. And uh, I I believe it's all by by pressure, just like a fuel pump, either like a uh pool pump. So when the pressure backs up to certain compaction, then you have to flush them out. But uh. Anyways, that's uh, bargain for Mikey. So I don't know if uh. Something to talk about with him also. I don't suppose we've already made a final determination on that. Like I said, I'd really like to get this going, um, this meeting because we're getting already a couple months to make this. And if we don't have the contractors out to bid and land up, we're gonna be another year because though this is when they're actually usually bidding and stuff. I'm glad we got going on it now. So I received. An email from Rick Pottker and said that we have never applied for the tobacco plant. Uh, basically the county gets a hundred thousand dollars a year from the tobacco companies. Um. And you can only apply for it once every three years. So we've never applied for it. So I did. Uh, that's all going to Rick and he's going to forward that. I got the updated uh plot plan on the. Uh splash pad and I figured that would be a good spot to apply because they want an outside help. Heart healthy activity to, because it's a tobacco plant, um, activity to give money to. So I asked him, I called him up. I said, hey, Rick, what do you think about the splash pad? And um, he goes, I think that's an amazing idea. So here's the. The whole grant application I filled out. I answered that. Um. Other than not being able to apply only once every three years and not being able to apply for more than fifteen grand, um, basically. You fill this out and last year Rick told me that they split the awards. And the amount of projects they had, each one, they split them evenly and each one got five grand. I uh, on that second page, you'll see that I put the maximum allowable limit of fifteen thousand and I also wrote on there, although any amount is appreciated. So that if they they do less, they'll give us what they can. Um. If you look at the two plot plans I gave you, that one where it shows the yellow. Um, originally we talked about having that splash pad right up here in the front and then as I got to move and snow out of the parking lot. And like, there's a pilot here. I'm like, that is not a good place to have. So the second plot that um. A D E A had located over here that I gave them when we did the perk test back there last fall with the little mini excavator. Um, is probably gonna be the more acceptable one.
Well, especially further away from that road.
It is. It's further away from the road. I know that Sam and I, when we first talked about, we're trying to keep it close to the playground that's already there. And then I got, I was like, wow. You'll lose that driveway first of all. Because it would have been right in the middle of it. And I said, oh, many of these people that are playing on the playground won't wanna get soaked with whatever's going on over there. So coming up basically the back corner right over here of the parking lot fence, um. And putting a walkway over just in back to the basketball courts over there. So that will place that somewhere over there is, I think, the best.
Yeah, I agree.
Place to put that.
Weren't we concerned something that uh about wetland being over in there?
No, I was concerned about the creek that runs through here. So that's why I had all the engineering done and I had uh A D E A plot this out. As you can see, the sand filter comes in just prior to the creek over here. Uh, this is all to, they're stamped engineering, so. If we do it there, it's it's supposed to be a go. Um, all the, all the agencies will, alphabets will be again on board. I recontacted D C about two years ago on this when I first started this. Uh, to try to get it revived. Um, we did get the final, like I said, letter from Dazni. That hundred and twenty-five thousand is all locked in. Now the problem I got that I just got with Joe Dunzek uh from Vortex. Is that he goes, it looks like it's gonna be fall or spring the next year before it can hit you. And I'm like, you gotta be kidding me. I said, we're everywhere. He goes, yeah, he goes, I pretty much got all my projects already taken care of. So he goes, unless there's a cancellation, maybe I can get in earlier, but you're looking at the earliest is probably uh September, October. Before he could start working on it if he gets to it this year. Um, that was a a big bummer, but anyways, um. The other thing that we need to do, which is another contract for this would be to sign that one with um Vortech. That's why we got a booklet there. Basically, this will show. I don't know if anybody wants to see. I'll throw that one out there because it's a spare tonight because we don't have. A couple of the board members here. Um, this is what. He's put in there for amenities. That first page, you'll you'll see that nice colorful drawing. That bucket of days in there. There's a couple and a things that shoot water out. Plus you get the water shooting out from the middle. The whole hoop that sprays water. Although I like the kidney design, those about twenty thousand dollars more. Uh, the kidney design is about twenty thousand dollars more. So I said, okay, uh, we'll go back to the, we'll go with the oval, the design. So that shows why he's got mapped out there.
That's pretty much it.
Yeah, that's the whole project because I had to have these booklets made up for that grant. So I put all the booklet there. That's the one on a plot two record, you wanna see? Of the two places that we're talking about on the, on the grounds. And we're relocating it. Um. So from last year to this year. You can see the the price is uh one seventy-six and seven dollars and eleven cents. Uh, the other, last year's price was seventy-two thousand nine something. So over about a four, five thousand dollar increase from last year. Hopefully we get at least the five grand from the grant, the other tobacco grant and then above that will naturally take this down. The other thing is this is for a completed project. I talked to Joe. So he goes, if you, you bring down. The item four, like for the, under the cement and you bring down the sand from the sand pit with you guys from the highway. And we don't have to pay Huntley or somebody to truck all that stuff. He goes, we'll take that, any kind of service work you do locally at the town, we'll take right off the project cost. So there's some things that uh Joe and I talked about as far as doing that also. There's no sense of paying for Sam. We got our own, you know. He's got plenty of that uh stacked up there as a question.
How big is this? Size wise?
It's it's pretty good size. If you look at in the center, you're gonna see the dimensions.
Oh, on this page?
It's either the oval shape.
Yep.
So it's thirty-nine feet roughly uh at the width and fifty-eight feet.
What do you put around that? Concrete on the outside?
The inside that you you'll see where all the blue lines are. That's where they put the amenities and then the the pump um. And the outlets are that dark blue in the center.
Yep.
Uh, that that second outside oval.
Yep.
Around is all cement that goes around. That's like a. A walkway around a pool, you know, an in-ground pool. That'll be all cement. Then from there out is you go right to grass and lawn. So um, everything's pitched to go back into the center and to the drain, which that second sheet right there will show you where that gets. Taken taken out to a sand filter and then goes to uh the ground. So you'll see that the one that we're looking at is the one in back of the basketball court there. And then you'll see that little brown box there. That's the sand filter.
That was the other one where you were gonna put it?
That was the the same thing, but it would have been up front. Yep. And I don't think after, like I said, after it'd be right in the way. And it would uh kinda limit where we could get access to the ball field. Where back there it's. More advantageous and nobody has to get wet unless they wanna go back there and get wet. But most of these, you'll see, once they they get this thing in, like the city when they did theirs. You'll have picnic tables around or benches for the adults. And uh, it's a good community, you know, event where everybody.
Is that a concrete walkway to it?
You can do either concrete or you can do gravel or you can do pavers, you know.
Yeah.
It's kinda up to you, but I'm gonna guess that what they put in there is probably a gravel base getting to it. Um. But anybody that owns a pool knows a little less sand and dirt you try to get into it, the better, but it's kinda. Um, like I said, I talked to uh Scott Stutter over at Plasberg Water and Sewer Department and my castle in town Plasberg because we humped out with the dog park. And we put the dog park over there and we donated money for that. Uh, as far as I know, uh, they're still good. We're hooking up the water supply to it out here on Hain. Um, because naturally we're we're gonna need a street shut off. We're gonna need to tap into it. We're gonna need a meter bolt because we have to know how much water is going on. I figured that out. I think it was uh one point three million gallons if it ran every minute of every hour of the day from late June to the end of, or beginning of September. Basically when school's out is what I I I figured we'd run it.
What, they gotta put a two inch line?
Three.
Three inch?
Three inch line, yeah. Yeah, if every amenity ran. That was on it, it would be about sixty-five gallons a minute that that thing would take in water. But they're set up in stages so that this one comes on, then that one comes on, and the next one comes on. So. I had to figure it out for all of them running at the same time because there's capability of it doing that. Even though we're not setting it up that way, we'll set it up so it comes in in stages. Uh, there's a couple of different boards that you can get to it. It's like a pedestal. And you go over there and it'll have a a button which will kick it on for however long, it'd say fifteen minutes, you know. And then after fifteen minutes, it automatically shuts off. Some, one of the kids would literally have to go over there and hit it again to make it go. So so. In other words, a kid can't go over there and say, okay, I'm done with this and then leave it running for the whole rest of the day for nothing. Um, the other thing that I incorporated in into the um mother board, so to speak, is hours of day of operation. So it can only be turned on from such such a time till such a time of need. So that way you you don't have to worry about somebody turning it on.
Are you gonna put lights out there too?
I I would probably do the same thing I did with uh River Street is what I was thinking is they put in three lights down at a forest for free. Uh, they even did the hundred amp service drop and I ran the hundred amps from the pole over to the gazebo. Um. And they took care of all that for for nothing. They they did that for us. They put those in with the six lighted poles that they did over at San River Road Park. They did the three down at River Street and down there. They took care of all that. Um, the last lighting I got left to do other than we did all the conversion of the streetlights is uh. Up at Hilltop Estates and all the lights are in, the poles are in. And they're just waiting on the bulbs down and they'll probably start that April and May when the weather turns. So I just got a phone call on the beginning of the day. They're like, what are the lights coming in up here? What the rest of it? I'm like, yeah, spring. They they came to it till spring. They're all excited. He goes, everybody's excited. They're gonna get a final lights up there. Took an extra two years to do that one because originally um. What do they call it? Custom lighting. It wasn't included where Nisek would do it for.
Yeah, decorative.
Decorative, thank you. That's the word I was looking for. But being that we already had decorative lighting and that's what spurred me because they, that was part of that grant we got for the five grand. Because that's another point you get if you convert your decorative lighting and I was like, they got decorative lighting up to Hilltop Estates and they got decorative lighting down at the new street. So when they converted all that, I I called him up and I said, hey. After the decorative lighting, well, we'll take care of that. He goes, let me check again. So he did. It took them about eighteen months and they finally approved it. So. Uh, other than. Any pole out there that's not right by a transformer, we'll have to pay to get the trench and the secondary, they call it a secondary line to that pole. So if it's thirty-five feet away, it's dollars, something a fuck, a few bucks a fuck. I I, last year, last fall, when we did that, I think it was right, right around, they figured about sixty-five hundred dollars for the extra work up there. No, because those those lighted poles were like three grand apiece. Not counting anything else, the insulation or anything. So if they're willing to do that, that's good. So um. I'll have this contract because I wanna lock this in before it goes any higher. And uh, I'll have that contract too for the twenty minute.
You're gonna have all the resolutions to done before that?
Yeah, I'll be working on this resolution tomorrow and get that done for her.
She probably won't be in.
I did uh La Berge one today, but I was working on all this for tonight. But uh, I got that one done and the Barden and La Juve, so that's done today. So I'll have those all word for her. I'll pop them over to her computer and then she can put them on the resolution format. I'll have all the meat and potatoes in the middle. But yeah, it looks like, like I said, probably fall. We're looking at fall.
Is there an estimated uh yearly cost to the town? Is that just gonna be like water and electricity?
Yeah, the water and electricity. There'll be a uh added added cost that'll go into uh the recreation budget.
Any estimate, like what ballpark that is?
I can, if you wanna call me, I can look up my my old notes. Um, roughly. Gets four dollars. Ours is three something. Three seventy-nine per thousand gallons is what we get charged roughly. Um, I'm also gonna talk to the town of Plasberg. I can't speak for them and see if they wanna donate any water to that every year. It wasn't a ton of money. I I wanna say. I wanna say it was like twelve hundred dollars for the whole year if it ran every minute of every day that it was allowed.
Might ask Plasberg what theirs costs uh to run. They got that little one, so.
Yeah, it'd have to be, again, I have to figure it out for the max flow at sixty-five G P Ms per minute to cover. My basis legally. So I have to have the the maximum amount it can for for the amount of time it's gonna be open each day for the amount of months that the thing's gonna be open.
What kind of maintenance is on it?
Actually, there's very little maintenance. Um, I asked that when they put the uh meter ball in. That they put a we cock and a drain over there so that we don't have to worry about it in the winter. Everything south drains out. Um.
Do you have to do anything like, does it get like uh algae or anything like?
I don't, I don't know if it would because it's corinated water. You know what I'm saying? Come right out of the tap. So I I I don't know. I imagine you're gonna, it's outside. You may get some stuff on there, you know, double up after a while that might have to be cleaned.
Minimal.
Yeah. I I, it's nothing that we can't do. You know what I'm saying?
Oh, you mean our building and grounds guy?
Yeah.
The same guy that shovels can do it?
Yeah, that's me. Yeah. So, um, yeah, it's nothing that we can't, really.
Is there gonna be an increase in the insurance?
No, I checked with that already and we already in our our policy, we got an inland marine policy. I checked on that because of the first one that we did that I was worried about was that bike pump tracks up there. And there there was none. He's, you, wait, uh, Brian told me you've already got the the policy. Um, I'm not gonna say we haven't had some um bruises or scrapes or abrasions up there, but nobody's even, even, I've heard them second hand. Nobody's called me and asked the town to do anything. Uh, we put the signs up up there at your own risk, the whole thing.
No state boards.
And the rules. That'll be the same thing here in the rules of operation. But you all know as well as I do that New York State's a deferred liability state. So if somebody gets hurt on your property, it doesn't matter if it's at your house or down here, they can sue you. So we've been lucky. I've been sued since I've been here. I'm not looking to get that or make that happen, but uh, yeah, no, it's a good question, but.
It'd be same as in the ball fields and stuff.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, somebody's broken on out there or twisted an ankle or whatever. Same liability.
Cause there's gonna be.
There was more liability, believe it or not, with the pump tracks.
Right. Because the kids are gonna be running here, you know that.
Yeah, then there is with that. That's what Brian said. He goes, he goes, not really on you. He goes, on us because we cover you for all that liability. He goes, but there's more liability on that, the two pump tracks you got up there than what we're worried about with that. So that that all will be added into the insurance. That's one of the things I did over the last three years is updated all our insurance because we were missing. We're missing not only buildings and equipment, but some property that we owned that didn't have insurance on it. So I updated all those. So it's all our properties have the proper insurance. The last one that I updated was the sand pit, believe it or not, didn't have it on it in uh the uh Pocket Hill, the old Pocket Hill Park.
In Ram Road.
Yeah. So that everything, I got those right from Mary. I got all the the uh accounts, all the plot numbers. And everything that we own is now.
It's bad not having it on that sand pit.
Yep, that was added. Which we're gonna talk about another one there. All right, let me get, any questions on that? I know I am throwing a lot at you, but as like I said, everything's coming to it at the same time. So that was the grant. I'm hoping we get the full fifteen on that. But even if we get the five that everybody got last year, it'll take care of the increase. So none of our numbers will change on this. Uh, so. I did the projections so far on the ARPA, ARPA funds. Because we got a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the Dazni and uh the Macy Lane, the Rixen Ave and the um. Splash bag will hopefully eat up the rest of it, but it looks like it's not um. Estimated cost and they went high on this for a reason so that they weren't under like they were last time. Under like they were last time. The Macy Lane, they figured about three hundred eighty-three thousand. Um, don't forget that thirty thousand of that comes out of Macy Lane because they approved us to use thirty thousand under, under, I mean. They agreed to it, but I mean, it's in the unallocated fund reserve. So, um, so that'll drop that down to three fifty. Um. Three fifty-three actually. Rixon Ave was, uh, estimated to right now be about seventy-one thousand four hundred dollars. And that's for the pipe and the connections. Uh, that's with the understanding that, uh, Mr. Trump, well, he does all that work up there on his. No labor there. Uh, and the oval, uh, plot pad, uh, the cost estimate for that will be at an ARPA forty-eight thousand two oh three. The whole project, like I said, is one seventy-six right now, but that's what we have to do. That's without any additional grant money from the tobacco grant. It sounds like we're gonna get money out of that. I just don't know how much. It depends on how many people. So if you add all that up. Um, it came to four hundred and seventy-two thousand six oh three. The total ARPA funds that we received was five hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars fifty-eight cents. Uh, total ARPA projects again was at four seventy-three six oh three. If you subtract that, that leaves forty-nine thousand two forty-one fifty-eight left. Then we have spent at ARPA to date, five thousand dollars. And that is for engineering on the, on the projects up at Rixon Ave and up at Macy Lane and at. Um, ABA for the, uh, Splashback. So we have, it's a ton of money. Most of that stuff right now has been pretty. Inexpensive for what we're talking about government expenses. So you subtract that five grand. It should leave us with forty-four thousand two forty-one fifty-eight that we still gotta spend. And we got the one hundred twenty-five four to get that done. Before we know it, it works out. We can hopefully stay consistent and before we. Suggest another one. Or we can put the rest of that onto the garage to, that, that could help out with all the lines up there.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? That and that. We're gonna get coffee for that.
I'm almost done.
I'll get you out of here. So. It's come to my intention that we might be able to get this land here. Because. Our, uh, our sand pit's getting smaller through that way. So if you look at the parcel, um. Looks like she's willing to. Work with us. I talked to Gary, Dr. La, or Assessor about this. He's the one that, that brought it to my attention. And, um, she really don't need to hold on to that land anymore. She's kinda looking to get rid of it. So it might be a good time to approach her. It borders, I don't know if they seen it as it is right now.
Is this deeper, deeper in or deeper? South, wider.
It's, it's, yeah, it's a lot wider in the front. They get.
Right, you see the.
If you look at, this is Mason Street.
Right.
So this property goes all the way here, then it cuts in here, then it widens back out and goes further back. You know what I'm saying? So there's quite a bit in the back, but.
And this is us now, the broken line? What's the broken line?
Well, no, that's, that's a, that would be, uh, Connors. But if you look at this center line where it says the sound. Town of Scott of Falls, as it shows right here, nine point four acres in the center. That's what we're getting our sand out of. I bet you we're halfway through that, if not more.
And she wants to get rid of how much? The whole?
Well, I'm gonna guess she wants to get rid of it all. She would get rid of that, uh, two, two parcels. Yeah.
Upper half is nothing but wet.
But it, but it's.
There's a swamp down there, bad swamp down there.
It's half of that is wet.
Off the other side.
Not much farther than where their fill is right now. And then.
If you went right to the sand pile, straight south.
Right, you drop right off to the swamp. Down by broke, right?
Yeah, then it rolls down to the left. I cut the wood down there and it was wet with Mason Street.
Really?
You bet.
Yes.
But the rest of it was high and dry.
Yeah, the rest is right in sand.
Sand. You wouldn't have to have.
No, because Gary's the one that brought this to my attention.
You know how you have to be like fifty feet or hundred feet? You wouldn't have to because you could use that. There's a lot of sand.
Jesus, we could get both them parcels. You'd be set for life.
And another chunk that borders that you could probably buy two.
In the, towards the back.
Yeah, I'm a Browns.
Heard that too.
Oh, really?
I think your brother owns some.
Yeah.
On the other side of the big square. But Browns owns on both sides because they boarded him on the other side of that as well. But Brown's got a small chunk there. We cut that when we did on Kevin's.
Right.
Your sand on that.
Yeah, I thought, I thought Barry owned some.
But see, if you bought that, you wouldn't have to leave that hundred foot. You could take it right from your pit, right across.
Yeah, because we own it all.
So much sand would be there that.
Yep. No, you're right. And that's the town zoning, the, the, the stated D, state DEC zoning says twenty-five feet.
Right, the town is a hundred.
Yeah, it's a hundred feet here.
See, and that'd be a lot of sand in that.
It, it would set them up for at least the next thirty years.
Oh, a lot more, yeah, a lot more. Cause that, you know, it's deep down to that.
If you ever had to put up a salt shed, you'd have to use some of the land.
Well, we're gonna have to put up the salt shed.
We've got it up on there right now. I've been saying it right now in meetings. You're not gonna haul it all. We don't get off there, you don't want to get.
But you could put the, the salt shed right where your pile is now.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know?
And then it's not very far to haul. It ain't much further than what you're hauling it now, if any.
No, like you say, the, the property can join so you could put a ramp right down to it and stack it.
You could take that two hundred feet.
Yep.
But it's definitely something to think about because you.
Oh, yeah.
Salt shed.
And the big thing is that I ran kinda in a, I ran kinda in a brick wall with, uh, the Connors. As far as doing a utility right away. Cause when I did that right away down through there and put the right away where it actually was supposed to be. Um, they really did not want to do a utility right away. So. If we own that land, we'd have our own right away.
You had your own right away.
Put a salt shed and lighting and stuff like that. So they're not working in the dark back there when just the lights out, the excavator, I mean, the front end loaders. Uh, it, it's night and day.
When are, uh, when are you gonna know more on this deal?
Well, hopefully one of you two guys, somebody that can, uh, maybe reach out. Um. I can get you all the information because I'm telling you, I am swamped with everything else I'm doing right now. That's just a fraction of what I've, I've been working on for this weekend. It's only. Tuesday, but, uh. I can, I can get the information, get her phone number. I'll reach out to her first, break the ice, so to speak, and then. Uh, see if we can get a couple of the councilmen together to, to work on that.
Humble with you. I, you know, another one too is that turnaround at the end of Rixon.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta work on that for sure. Then plow, not backing out of that.
Yeah.
Element of that.
And it's hard to land.
Yeah, it's hard to land. So, um, that won't take place until the spring because Mike's gonna have to go up there and cut that out with the guys and then put some gravel in there. So he has a hammerhead at least to back into and then go back up the other way. Um. The good time to do that is when that project starts because.
Talking about Rixon Ave.
Yeah.
Plows gotta go down. We own the land on the end.
Yeah, I wouldn't want any of them drivers have to back out.
Well, they got, they, they do now. They gotta back out.
Well, they used to, worse than that because they drive in and they gotta back all the way out and then they gotta back all the way back in and then plow the other side. So.
That's dangerous.
Yeah, it's crazy.
That, that's just crazy. When you own land.
Well, yeah, especially.
You own the land and if they cleaned it up back there, you're not worn enough.
Yeah, that way. Right. But that, that fence on the end is on town land, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
That's what we're, we just found out. We just, mostly, mostly sure. Reggie did some digging into that too and. Um, he thought that land was owned actually by Earth Waste Management, but it turned out that it is ours. So, you know. He, the information's only as good as you got. I would get it off survey. Make sure that we have proper title to it. That way everything's all set and we don't have any arguments. If they wanna argue, they're not arguing with us. They can get their surveyor and then the two surveyors can argue.
I think that's where gagging used to go down and dump their, uh, pump truck.
Yeah.
Right on, straight, straight down Rixon Ave.
Yeah. So there's a, there's a, a ton of movement parts here. Let me, all right, I'll let me throw these last two things out here and then I'll get you out of here before you get murdered. In your boxes, Mike has a estimate. I don't wanna go over that right now for a, I think it's a road widener.
Put it on.
Yeah, road widener. Um. I don't know if he's gonna be able to get that this year. I'll have to check his large equipment fund and see what's in there after we get done buying the front end loader. But, uh. That's something like a hundred and one thousand.
For a shoulder machine?
Road widener, yeah.
He wants all this equipment. He wants all this equipment. And I'm gonna get back to it. And I sound like a broken record, but why are we sitting on three loaders? When you can sell one and have money to get what he needs? We don't need three loaders in the town of Scott of Falls.
They not be in it than four.
No, you're not. You're gonna get the average seventy-two thousand, which is about, you're lucky.
The old, old.
If you sold it out. The last three pieces are five pieces of equipment. We circled stuff there last year. I think the highest bid even on that great big old. Paver was what? Nine hundred dollars you got for that? And then they, they took it from there and they scrapped it and they got more than that for scrap metal for it. So, um. That, the, the bad thing is that you, you couldn't replace that.
Okay, I get it.
I don't, yeah.
Donna just came home from surgery.
That's gonna, that's gonna be the end of it then. Cause I can't, I gotta have a form. I can't. All right.
You want me to come back?
Huh?
You want me to come back? You just, I can go just.
You don't need to take a break if you want. I just, I can't do it without three of us.
Okay.
I don't have a legal.
Let me go over and I'll, just give me ten minutes.
Yeah, no problem. All right, so I'm gonna take a little recess.